Good evening and welcome to Collette City Council and Center Agency meeting on Wednesday, the what's today, the twentieth. Those of you who want to join us by Zoom, you may call in at six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. And I believe on the side it has also the media ID number. So if you'd like to join us by Zoom, you may. Go ahead and get your call please.
Mayor Ana Velazquez. Mayor Lieutenant Ben Jimenez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Maria Farlejo.
Here.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera, absent. We got one.
Thank you. Also, it's noted that Mayor Velazquez and Councilmember Cabrera are from the cities of Sacramento and their absence is excused. Right, at this time we're going to have our pledge of allegiance. If we could have a print phone, we don't think that if you'd be so kind.
I'd like to use.
To the flag of the United States and to the Republic of Canada. Before we get into the meeting, if I may, Council, I'd like to take a moment just to moment of silence for our 911 anniversary. It's been 22 years since we lost 2,996 people in a terrorist attack. And in addition to, I'd also like to give a little silence for LA Deputy Ryan Groomer, in LA who was sent with extensively shot in the back of the head while sitting in his patrol car. So if you please join me. Thank you. All right. Additional modifications? Any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Yeah, just that A and D will be coming another day. We need things that yeah.
Presentation for A and D agricultural, correct? And council forward. Now we'll go ahead and move into public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda and items in the interest of the public that are within the jurisdiction of the council. The public comment card should be filled out completely to ensure for those that are here in the council chambers and speaker will be called upon to give a comment. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes. The mayor may further limit the time for the public comments depending on agenda schedule. Please be brief and to the point. Watching the discussion shall be taken on an item not appearing on the agenda. At this time, I don't see anyone in the council chambers or possibly I can see a couple, but any public comment?
That came to the email.
Okay. We have no public comment.
This public comment is from Francisco Javier Pino Jr. It is sad that in the last meeting, three council members were elected, three council members we elected voted without hesitation to bring the voters to the right to vote for a district map. You, city council, needed the citizens to vote for you. And now you three want to deny us residents the right to select a map and elect our mayor. Shame on you. Thank you.
Any public comment? Any additional ones from within the chambers? If not, then we'll take it out to Zoom. Again, if you'd like to make the public comment, please raise your hand so we can acknowledge you. Seeing that there are none, we'll go ahead and move into council presentations. At this time, council, if I if I may move around a little bit, oh, no, this is the third one. No, we're going to move it to recognize move item three to number one, item two to two, they'll stay there. And the last one, item four to three. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and present a certificate of appreciation. Councilmember Cora Deho will go ahead and present it for us.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of presenting the certificate of appreciation to Grocery Outlet today. And the certificate reads, "On behalf of the Solidad City Council, we thank Grocery Outlet for their dedication and service to the community. Your commitment to Solidad and its residents has been evident through the independence from hunger, food drug, the walking the park for leukemia and lymphoma society, fundraiser, and your overall dedication to the well-being of the community. So it is my honor to present this award to you."
All right.
Wait, if you don't come up and say something. Krista.
I'm emotional. I might. Thank you. You know, the reason we moved here and the reason we moved our entire family to Solidad was to be able to open our own store and give back. We came from a corporate level that it was more about what they wanted us to do. Now it's our decision. So it's an honor to be able to do what we can for the community. With that being said, it would be really great to get more company in our neck of the woods and build. It's people still don't realize we're open. So if we are to, you know, get more over there businesses, that would be just make us be able to do more. It would get more people in our door. The more we do, the more we can give back. And that's the whole concept of why we we came here. So thank you. We love doing what we do and we're happy to be able to give. Yeah.
Thank you. Well said.
Oh, sorry. This Saturday, all day, five percent of all our sales this Saturday is going back to Solida Unified School District and Mission. So this Saturday, please come shop. We got five percent we're donating. So we're going to have a car display and face painting. And we're giving away free tote lunch totes for kids, but it's like colorable lunch totes. The first 500 kids need to be present. So please come shop Saturday. Thank you again.
Thank you. Council?
You know, for me, it's just it's been great to see all the involvement of this couple and grocery outlets. They've participated with a number of groups here in the community and have joined Rotary and just being involved in a lot of different events here in our community. So it's been wonderful to have you guys here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I actually did have a lot to say. I had to really condense it, which was super hard. And to me, it was just the the business contributions that you guys have made to our city by employing 35 persons, including two two high school students as well. I'm also racing when it comes to donations and sponsorships, receiving about 22,000 for the cancer pressures, which was a leukemia and lymphoma fundraiser. And that was possible also with our community participating in those fundraisers. I know when it comes to donations, there's a thousand that was donated to the NJROTC, 500 to the Solida Mission Red Center, to what was it, 500 to the South County Timings, and then 500 to the UFRAS prevention program for Solida PG, the Solida Hot Summer Days. You guys have helped out with coaching, feeding the hungry during Thanksgiving, during Christmas. And I could go on and on, but I won't. But just wanted to say thank you so much. And I'm so happy that you guys are here for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And if I can add to that is that, you know, we appreciate you guys being here. Your business has given us another opportunity to shop. I know for myself, it's just my wife and I, so we go. But, you know, I tried the meats now and I know I can go buy meat there and cook it that night. It's not frozen. So but you have a lot of stuff that that we look for and at a great price. And so and there's not a time, I don't think I go there, I don't see one or two there, if not both of you there. So we appreciate for all you do for our community and giving back to us. You're kind of business people we want in our town. You're the kind of people we want to live here that contribute and give back to our community. So thank you so very much. Thank you.
Appreciate. And I don't know if we wanted to take the picture because I don't see anyone else for the presentations.
Sure. All right. Let's do that. We're going to take a five minute break to take a quick photo. All right. Thank you for that break and our patience with us. Now we'll move on to proclamation for on the city of Solida to Eden Housing. Again, Councilmember Cora Deho?
Yes, thank you. So I have the privilege of presenting this proclamation and recognition of Eden Housing for the 55th anniversary. Unfortunately, we don't have a representative of theirs here to date. But nevertheless, we definitely want to give them that recognition. So I'll go ahead and start with reading it. Whereas Eden Housing founded in 1968 in a nonprofit organization, is a nonprofit organization committed to providing affordable housing solutions in California with a mission to create healthy, safe, and inclusive communities. And whereas Eden Housing has been a leader in the affordable housing sector for over five decades. And whereas throughout its history, Eden's organization has addressed the critical issue of housing affordability in California, helping individuals and families from diverse backgrounds and staple homes by providing affordable housing options. Eden Housing has played a crucial role in fostering a sense of community and stability in Solida. And whereas Eden's Tempora Apartments in Solida has over 44 apartments as part of the Bracero organization, Tempora Apartments provide an environmentally responsible and amenity-rich community with quality onsite management and supportive services such as approved programs, health, and wellness activities. Computer literacy and more are all offered at no cost to the residents. Whereas the organization continues to work closely with local stakeholders and government agencies to address the ongoing challenges of housing affordability in the region and create a brighter future for all residents. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Solida City Council that Eden Housing be congratulated on the celebration of its 55th anniversary and commended for the vital role it has played in ensuring equity by serving the community of Solida. And extended best wishes for continued success in the future.
And we'll be presenting that to Eden. They have an event.
Great. All right. Thank you. Oh, the next one we have, our last proclamation is Hispanic Heritage Month that will be presented by Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. So we have a proclamation of the city of Solida, September 15 of 2023 to October 15 of 2023 as Hispanic Heritage Month. So I'll read the proclamation and then I will mention the organization that we are handing the proclamation to. So the whereas September 15, 2023 to October 15, 2023 is recognized as Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic community and highlights its countless achievements. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month honors the invaluable ways Hispanic Americans contribute, our common goals of providing an opportunity to work toward a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. Whereas in the words of Sisat Chavez, "Preservation of one's own culture does not require contempt or disrespect for other cultures." And thus, we all should celebrate the contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central, and South America. And whereas Hispanic Americans represent a significant and vast growing demographic of the city of Solida, at 72.5% of our population, and greatly contributes to the economy, diversity, and civic life of the city. And whereas Hispanic people have made innumerable contributions to the Solida community, and the city recognizes and celebrates the diverse histories and cultures of the Hispanic population. And whereas the Hispanic community is integral to our city, commerce, and community with business owners, civic leaders, residents alike who are proud to be part of the Hispanic community, let's strive for greater visibility, recognition, and presentation, representation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Solida City Council on behalf of the city of Solida and all its residents do hereby proclaim September 15, 2023 to October 15, 2023 to be Hispanic Heritage Month and urge all residents to celebrate the past, the present, future contributions of Hispanic community in the city of Solida. Really briefly, and since I know we don't have headphones on over here, quiero decir un poquito en español lo que es para hacer leer. So estamos dando esta proclamación de la ciudad de aquí de Soledad, proclamando que el 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre es el mes del hispano. Y este queremos reconocer este mes porque es importante de celebrar la comunidad hispana dentro de nuestra comunidad y todo lo que ha hecho para nuestra comunidad. Este este honor de no poder separar que nuestros hispanos han contribuido en diferentes metas, en oportunidades de trabajo, de hacer este pueblo y esta comunidad más fuerte, más inclusiva, y en una forma que prospera nuestra nuestro ambiente y nuestra comunidad. En las palabras de Cesar Chavez, de tratar de preservar nuestra cultura no requiere y no estamos haciendo algo en una forma de quitar el respeto a otras culturas, sino de celebrar las contribuciones que tiene nuestro pueblo, nuestro nuestro pasado y nuestra nuestra gente. Entonces esas contribuciones del pasado, de la gente de aquí del norte de América, de España, de México, del Caribe, del centro y Suramérica, es lo que estamos celebrando hoy y este mes. Aquí en la ciudad de Soledad, el 72.5% de nuestra población son hispanos. Y entonces esas contribuciones que tienen es la diversidad de la economía, la diversidad de nuestra gente, de lo que se involucra en nuestra comunidad y en lo que es vida cívica. Y entonces queremos dar esa reconre, queremos reconocer, disculpen, no tengo lo descrito, reconocer estas culturas, estas historias, y lo estamos haciendo, reconociendo a nuestra gente, a nuestro pueblo en esta forma. So ahora estamos proclamando por parte de la comunidad, por parte del Consilio de aquí de Soledad, que estamos proclamando que el 15 de septiembre de 2023, y amigo, 1923, al 15 de octubre de 2023 de este año como el mes de hispanos. Gracias a ustedes que están aquí y queremos darles a este reconocimiento, esta proclamación al grupo de líderes campesinas que son aquí del Valle de Salinas, que representan muchas partes de aquí del fundado, pero todo el Valle de Salinas, de Soledad, de Greenfield, y otras áreas. Queremos darles las gracias por estar aquí con nosotros y por darles esta reconocición que ustedes merecen. Han hecho mucho trabajo en por años aquí en esta comunidad. Y este por eso queremos darle esta proclamación a ustedes directamente, porque ustedes han hecho el trabajo no solamente aquí en Soledad y en el Valle, sino al nivel estatal. Y por muchos muchos años, muchos de ustedes y otras antepasadas han hecho ese trabajo. Muchas gracias a ustedes.
Anybody who would like to come up and speak from your organization?
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes a ustedes, miembros del Consilio y a quienes nos acompañan día de hoy. Estamos aquí para agradecerles esta proclamación que nos están dando. Gracias, muchas gracias. Y especialmente le queremos dar las gracias a Ana Velázquez, nuestra nuestra alcaldesa, verdad, por tener en cuenta esta organización. Mi nombre es Josefina Muñoz, y yo soy la representante del comité de aquí en Soledad de líderes campesinas. También nos acompaña la señora Abelia García, que es representante del comité de VINTI, y también es presidenta de la mesa directiva de la organización de líderes campesinas. Y también nos acompañan algunas compañeras, miembros. Líderes campesinas es una organización al nivel estatal y les compartir nuestra misión para seguir dar un poquito de detalle de nuestro empeño. La misión de líderes campesinas es fortalecer el liderazgo de la campesina para que juntas damos el puente que logren sus cambios sociales, económicos y políticos que aseguren nuestros derechos humanos. para que juntas tenemos el puente que logren sus cambios sociales, económicos, y políticos que aseguren nuestros derechos humanos. El enfoque en la organización de líderes campesinas es educar a las comunidades con temas sobre migración, derechos laborales, festividad, asalto y acoso, abuso menores, violencia doméstica, entre otros. Al estar aquí también queremos que dierdes que por favor tomen en consideración la necesidad de tener un refugio para mujeres y sus familias cuando sufren de violencia como la violencia doméstica y el acoso sexual, la violencia familiar, ya que de Salinas tiene las raíces de espera. Si logramos un refugio aquí en Soledad podremos ayudar con rapidez y así podrán recibir los servicios de manera más rápida a las personas que lo ocupan. Muchas gracias.
Council. Yeah, I would like to say something. I'm gonna say it first because I want our leaders here to be able to understand. Pero de todo quiero felicitarlas en la reconoción que recibieron y también quiero agradecerles a todas por estar aquí. Quería decir algo que realmente me impresionó de ustedes cuando tuvieron, creo que fue el año pasado en octubre, hasta eso cuando tuvieron el evento acerca de la violencia doméstica. Y fue la primera vez creo que yo he visto que han hecho esto aquí en el pueblo. Mi mamá cuando estábamos chicos y viamos de Texas, ella, you know, tenía ese problema y se vino acá a California con cuatro mujeres sola. So definitivamente es algo que puedo apreciar y agradecer y sí es algo que se ocupa, verdad, hablar de eso y ayudarse uno al otro. También esta semana estuve mirando, en apareció en mi página un video que ustedes hicieron, está de mi amiga Panamá. A mí no sé, creo que no se ven reconocidas, qué tal es, también sale, el video es muy bueno, tiene muy buena información. Me encantaría dar más pairs para que más personas comiren, tengan algunos recursos o uno puede ir a mí enseñar la verdad a varios lo que es el proceso, solo más quería decirles muchas gracias por todo su trabajo y me encantaría trabajar con ustedes en el futuro. Gracias.
Este también para hablar un poquito en español, este creo que para mí en el pasado por muchos años trabajé con Laura Caballero y con muchas otras personas especialmente en Greenfield por años. Cuando trabajaba para los miembros de campesinos yo este también trabajé con muchas de las líderes campesinas y participamos en diferentes conferencias que hasta también ir a Sacramento a dar testimonio sobre diferentes cosas, este so por muchos años, yo sé que en los últimos dos, tres años no he estado muy involucrado en en eso por la razón de que tengo mis hijos todos en el colegio, viajando siempre fuera del área en los fines de semana. So no he tenido mucha oportunidad en ese aspecto, pero lo que sí puedo decir es que el trabajo que han hecho por más de veinte años aquí en esta área ha sido un trabajo que en realidad se ha visto. Yo sé que directamente cuando estamos hablando de un refugio de mujeres es algo que se ha discutido aquí en el pueblo por mucho tiempo. Yo puedo, yo me acuerdo en tres ocasiones donde a mujeres han llegado a la casa de nosotros para hablar a mi esposa, más que conmigo, la verdad, para ver qué es lo que pudieran hacer, qué recursos existen para ver cómo se puede hacer algo. So este esfuerzo es algo que hemos escuchado, estamos escuchando y tenemos que ver cómo se puede hacer algo porque en realidad no solamente se necesita aquí, se necesita en todo el Valle, pero si se puede centralizar aquí en esta área creo que sería algo muy importante. So vamos a ver cómo se puede hacer algo, este creo que ustedes lo han traído a hablar sobre esto el año pasado y muchas veces anterior que de eso y sabemos que el trabajo que se hace en el fondado de Monterrey especialmente cuando tenemos la agencia que no 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 está aquí sino que tienen que venir aquí y tenemos ese, esos son uno de los que pueden hablar que son importantes y no les quito que no son importantes, pero no tener un lugar donde pueden ir en realidad está seguro. Aquí en realidad saben que va a haber ese ese trabajo, esa ayuda es necesi- se necesita. Son una de las cosas creo que podemos hacer por parte de este Consilio es por lo mínimo tener esas conversaciones con ustedes y por lo mínimo de ver qué otras agencias existen y cómo lo han hecho ellos para ver si hay algo que se puede hacer aquí en esta comunidad. So gracias a ustedes por traer esto y gracias por estar aquí.
Really, I'm not in English, my Spanish isn't very good. I mean, for us, Hispanic Heritage Month is so important just because that's who we are, that's what I am. And all the contributions that we made to the United States. We are the fabric of the United States from from working to getting our families here, making a better life for our children, getting them educated and moving forward. We, the Hispanic culture has always focused and concentrated and held hard work, dedication, education, and family to the core of each group. Our own city, we have five council members that are all Hispanic. And for that, I grew up here in this town. I worked in the fields during the summers. My uncles were involved in the UFWD march over in Stanislaw and Stanislaw County participated with them. My father was the chief of police here for many years and worked with CLRA, the Campesinos, the different groups. And so I've always been around it and been part of it. So it goes without saying that I'm very proud of the Hispanic community and I'm very proud of Hispanic Heritage Month. And I want to thank you guys for being here today. Thank you.
Really quick. Entonces, quiero que ustedes quemen es quiere que sepan que para él en mes hispano, en el río hispano, es muy importante para él como hispano que él como hispano sabe lo que quiere vivir, tener esa dedicación a la familia, al trabajo, a su familia, hasta ha involucrado a su tiempo en el fondado Stanislaw, con el ámbito de campesinos, también consiguió la laure. Entonces él quiere agradecer todo el trabajo que están haciendo ustedes y reconocer también todo lo que significa ser hispano para nuestra comunidad de aquí en Soledad.
All right, thank you for that small break. Now we'll move into a brief down to city business now, a brief presentation from our contract city engineer Leon Gomez regarding the truck route.
Our CEO Trupillo. Good evening, council. Mayor. Mayor of the Council City Managers and your chairman Michael. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We are going to sit up in here here to give you all an update tonight on the city of Salada truck route and present some updates. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let me know when you want me to see it. Okay. Are with me on the phone tonight I have Mr. Leo Trupillo who's a licensed traffic engineer with TL Engineering. And Leo has really special connection to Salada because he's from Salada too. In fact, I grew up with Leo and have known him for many years here living in the city of Salada. That I could just give a brief moment for Leo to introduce himself and Leo if you could just tell the council about, you know, your experience with Salada and what you do.
Sure, yeah. Good evening, council members. My name, as Leon said, my name is Leo Trupillo with TL Engineering. We've been brought on board under the city's on-call engineering contract to assist the city with any traffic-related issues. And our first order of business here will be to assess the truck routes, the old and the new within the city of Salada limits. And I would also just like to say really quick that I echo what a lot of you guys were just saying right now about, you know, growing up in Salada and working in the field and all that because I went through exactly the same thing. And so I'm very proud of the Hispanic community as well.
Great, thank you, Leo. One of the first things we wanted to provide as part of the update is just a quick recap of city council actions going back to twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So as you all remember, on June first of twenty twenty-two, ordinance seven forty-five establishing a new truck route was first introduced, at which time traffic council requested by council members and there were no public comments received. Then on seven twenty twenty-two, the item was continued to provide additional time for public feedback regarding the new route. On August third, another continuation to provide additional time for feedback. And finally, on August seventeenth and twenty-two, a motion to adopt ordinance number seven forty-five was approved, formally established a new truck route. The former city engineer and consultant GHD, your presentation of council, the traffic count and collision data were presented and one public comment was provided. And then about six, seven weeks later, in March, on March fifteenth of this year, a second follow-up presentation was provided by the former city engineer, in which case whinerly concerns were listed with an alternative route. The alternative route was presented as not a viable option because of its capital residential streets, utility wires, if you remember that, the dip on lateral arc, and intersection recommendations to improve the newly established truck route were presented.
Leon, please stop your good equipment. Para todos que necesitan traducción, hay audífonos acá atrás donde pudieran agarrar traducción en español si gustan. Este eso están disponibles, nomás si los necesitan. Thank you.
Thank you. For comparison purposes, here is the new truck route on the left in green and the old truck route on the right in red. You can mind that if we pull, truck route was about five and a half miles in length. And the new truck route, again, higher in green and white, is about seven point eight miles in length. Actions that have been taken and entered to date. So myself, along with Leo Trupillo, TL Engineering and staff, have held a number of meetings with Public Works Department, police, chief bossing this team and fire departments to learn their observations regarding the new truck route. As Leo mentioned, we've established an on-call contract for traffic engineers for with Leo and his team to review of the new truck route and any proposed intersection improvements. A Facebook survey was also supposed to do the city's Facebook page. And then I've driven the new route a couple of times to confirm signage and if modifications might be needed, both the new route and the existing route. And looking at the results from the public outreach survey, the Facebook survey was launched on March thirty-first of this year and the last response was received on April twenty-eighth of this year. Three questions were asked, how can the new route be made safer and more effective? Which route would you consider safer? And are you aware of the newly adopted route? There were a total of seventy-six responses. Here's a quick bullet point listing the responses from the seventy-six. Really, the surprise is follows, trucks are driving too fast and running stop signs, trucks are cutting through town and residential areas. Trucks are using the old route, not sure what the new route is. School drop off times in high traffic and trucks be required to not use the route during certain times of the day. A request for more signage and pedestrian crossings need to be highlighted, including painting lines at near stop signs. Many cars are seen reversing at the intersections to make room for the truck turning movements. And I think this was most visible at West and Gavilan High School and down at Orchard Lane at Metz by the Hartnell Education Outreach Center. Two former truck drivers took the survey. One stated that the new route is good, that the navigation systems in their trucks take them on the closest route to their destinations, leaving this in confusion. The other truck driver stated that the effectiveness of the new route is poor due to the addition of distance travel, possibly two more miles. Next steps, what we'd like to do now that we have Leo and TL Engineering engaged from a traffic engineering perspective is really take a step back, reevaluate the existing route, reevaluate the new truck route, the community responses and input that have been received today, the concerns and the comments that have been provided by city council members going back to June of last year, performing a peer review again of the old and new truck routes, including analysis of collision data from Switters and number of accidents. And at this point, Leo, can you maybe explain to council what Switters is and how that would play into the further valuation of the truck route?
Sure. So Switter stands for statewide integrated traffic record system and it's managed and controlled by the California Highway Patrol. And what that is, is basically a conglomeration of all the accidents from all the local agencies, so including towns, cities, counties. So they gather this in their database and it's accessible to the public just upon request. So what that would give us is essentially all the accidents from usually typically we assess the last three years. So we'd get the accidents from the last three years and it would give us all the information like the type of accident, the cause of the accident, who was involved, vehicle-to-vehicle, truck-to-vehicle, pedestrian, bicyclist. So that's the type of information that we would need to adequately assess both truck routes.
Thank you, Leo. We're also going to have Leo perform a peer review of the proposed intersection improvements along the new route, which we presented to council last time. Potential recommendations for the relocation of existing truck route signs along whether the old route or the new route. So one of the issues in driving the new route that either was some of the signage might not get key decision points. So for example, if you look at when you're coming up west all the way to Orchard Lane, it's pretty long distance. You need an adequate number of truck route signs so that for drivers when they're driving down that route, don't question themselves if they're still on the route and maybe they're hanging left or right and why not turning through town inadvertently. Sometimes it's the placement of those signs. Typically, we'd like a truck route sign to be placed preceding the intersection in some locations that sign might be after the intersection or mid-block. When you, it's already too late to see it, you've already made a turn, a turning movement or heading through town. And additional public outreach measures, social media and newsletter. As you saw on the survey earlier, seventy-six responses, a lot of people were unaware of the new truck route. So definitely just getting the word out and more information out to the community would be great. And then Leo, there's been a request, you know, or one of the things that we saw recurring both in city council members' comments and members from the public is for me to add stops along the route. And could you maybe talk to council or mention what it goes into adding stops along the public way?
Sure, yeah, that's a very common thing to ask for. So unfortunately, you can't just install always stop control at any particular intersection. There has to be a process and you have to prepare a multi-way stop control warrant evaluation where you have six different criteria that is assessed and looked at. And then based on the results from that assessment of those six criteria, you can determine whether a always stop control is warranted at the particular location.
Thank you, Leo. So that concludes our presentation. We're open for questions from council members.
At this time, can we go ahead and take your thoughts in public? If you want to do that first. Want to go and take this out? First, we'll go ahead and in the chambers here, anybody having any questions regarding the track round presentation? Not seeing any, we can go going out to Zoom world, anybody out there have a question regarding the truck route? going out to Zoom world, anybody out there have a question regarding the truck route presentation? Not seeing any, right? Not seeing any, we'll bring it back to the the chambers, uh, council questions.
Um. I think it's more comments. Can I get comments?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, thank you both for your presentation. Um, I guess one of my concerns that that I think looks like it's also a concern that was brought up by by our public during the outreach. Um, is the trucks going too fast and also then um, backing backing up, I guess vehicles backing up to make space for them. The reason that um, this is a concern to me is that it seems that it's um the issue seems to be near our schools, like the Hartnell or Hartnell setup. We also have San Luis Santa school, which are elementary school students. Um, and I know there's no stop there because it is um uh, Mets Road out there, I think it's because they're the highway access. And then we also have the one that was in Gavilan, which is our high school students. Um, and so to me, that definitely is a concern. We have had a couple of incidents, unfortunately. Recent ones where we had um, children or students that were hit by vehicles. Um, so you know, to me, that's something that I definitely want to address. I think the signage. Um, you know, which you pointed out, thank you for going out there and kind of going the route, driving the road on your own. Um, signage definitely, you know, should be at points, like you said, where the truck drivers can see them and I have to guess if if they're on the right route or not. I was a house country runner in high school and I remember they would say this three, four miles out in the wilderness and if the markers aren't you know, they should be guiding you and if they're not close, um, then you tend to get lost, so.
No, I'm right, right past.
Yes, yes, exactly. So those were my, my concerns, also the signage, um, the speeding trucks and then and the the issues near the schools.
Um, Leo, do you have any comments to that concern?
No, I mean, that's a good comment. That's something that we should be assessing and looking at, you know, all the signage and and pavement markings. Um, as far as the speed, uh, you know, issues. We're actually going to be helping out the city as well with a a speed survey here shortly. And um, you know, we'll assess the placement of the speed limit signs on different corridors within town.
Thank you.
Sure. Come on.
Yeah, I'm working, yeah, for me, yeah, that was one of the questions is that when was the last time that was speeds for me then? Um, throughout the the truck route. Uh, I know that for Orchard Street, um, on Orchard Lane. Um, there's always a lot of complaints of the speed uh, on Orchard Lane. So that's part of the reason that you see some of the comments as far as more stop signs needed. Uh, folks have brought up the issue of uh, putting out speed bumps. There's been a lot of different questions, same thing that happens on uh, West Street on San Luis Santa as well. Um, Metz Road is also one of the ones that that is brought up because of that. And I think that, um, you know, looking at Squitters, I think that's really important because you get, you know, you get the data that's necessary. Uh, so the other issue is when, when some of the data is collected here in solid ad, um, do we use any type of video camera to collect that data? Or is it all just on the boxes and the accounts that we use? Or what other forms are we utilizing to collect some of the analysis, some of the data to be able to analyze?
So I'll defer over here to the chief, if he's still here. I don't know if they have traffic safety cameras in town that pick up any of that stuff.
Okay, I hear you. Uh, yeah, we, um, actually we've worked with these folks going around looking for things like this screening on Metz Road, San Luis Santa, things like that. We've been using the cameras that we have around now. We have a couple on uh, Metz Road down there. But we're also sending our code enforcement and our commercial enforcement officers out to monitor streets. Um, intersections and things like that to see if we can gather any kind of information to input into this. And um, another question, uh, I'm not sure if this is for the chief or Leon or for Leo. Um, in regards to in other cities, how is that data collected? That would be different from what we, how we collected. I know that when I've seen some of the data collection ways that they do in Salinas, I've noticed that they utilize a variety of different tools that they set up uh, for a day, they set up for a couple of days and they collect that data and and try to analyze that data. So I'm just wondering, do we do anything that some of the other cities are doing as far as collecting data like what they do?
So sure. So Leo, can you maybe describe how, first of all, I think how the Switters data, sure, thanks, chief. How the Switters data is collected, where that comes from and also most speed surveys might be performed?
Oh, sure. No, so the Switters data is uh, just a request, a simple request over to the CHP website. They usually turn it around in a day. So you just tell them what, you know, what years you want uh, in what city or what jurisdiction and they provide you the data. Uh, as far as data collection for traffic volumes per se, uh, most agencies, you know, use outside sources to do the data collection and most of the sources we use, uh, two or three of them ourselves and uh I I think all of them use video uh, collection now. So they actually record, you know, for the amount of hours that they're going to collect. And then take it back to their their office and use their programs to then, you know, uh, generate the data out of that video and provide you with that.
That is, I think so, yeah. And I know that the community had done some of the surveys, but there's a lot of questions about it. I just want to make sure that we are looking at different manners to be able to get the data that's necessary. Thank you.
Yeah, I I just have a couple of comments of pretty much uh, on the same lines as signage. Uh, again, uh, notifying the lady I'm now because it makes sense with truck drivers, they put that location in your GPS and it's going to take you down that route. Uh, and that that's not the truck route, so therefore the truck route has changed. Uh, one of the things is unfortunately, the way our our city is configured. There's really not too many, there's two ways to go in and, you know, you don't want to go through the residential area on Third Street. So unfortunately, I do this next row where it gives us Orchard and then uh, West. Uh, so with those two, we have a high school going down west. And on the other way down mess and uh, then going on to uh, East Street, uh, yep, uh, God, you're San Luis Santa, God, Milan and Moon Street School. So and those tend to be the elementary to junior, junior high kids. So you get uh, more kids, uh children walking in that direction uh, when school starts and then when school releases. Um, unfortunately, it appears as though we're not going to make a decision here tonight. So um, again, we're we're just looking for information is um, one would be uh, signage. Two would be with the chief enforcement. Uh, when we do pick that one and most likely whichever one it is that uh, if we could utilize our traffic control officers, uh, you know, school starts at eight AM, so they start rolling in there about seven fifteen or seven forty-five, uh, because they all walk by my house too and uh and then uh, after they get out, well, I know they release it little different times than one another, but that would be helpful as well. And then the signings issue for the the trucks, um, that they understand where where, you know, the route is and then they follow the route. So though those, those are my only thoughts. I don't know, but uh
Just, just, just certain more. Uh, I know that in in the past, um, in with, um, for example, with uh, Pinnacles, uh, before, uh, you know, we became the gateway to the pinnacle. When you looked up the word Pinnacles, how to get to the Pinnacles, it always, it always pointed you to the east side. Um, and we ended up having to uh, go to Google Maps as well as with Apple Maps and give them the information of that there was a west side uh, to it. So I'm wondering, is that, is that something that we need to do with the truck route to put the truck route on Google Maps somehow? And then also put it on Apple Maps or TomTom or anything else, Wazie or whatever, because there's so many programs out there. But is there something that we as a city or as our interim engineer needs to do to put that out, that this is currently what the truck route is? Uh, to put it out at those maps so that when they do search on their system, whatever their GPS system, most of them are going to be using these types of maps for the most part. I'm wondering if that will pop, pop up as this is the truck route rather than them going the shortest distance.
Yeah, that's certainly something that we can look into. How to exactly do that process? We haven't done it yet. We could certainly look into, you know, updating those apps. They reflect the the accurate truck route or the current truck route. Do you know if you have any experience with with that or what those systems might be?
No, no, same, same as you. I mean, I I don't, I haven't had any experience directly with any of those uh, sources to be able to implement some of these changes. Typically, that just gets updated as, you know, on the players, as things happen in in different agencies. So, yeah, we would, we would have to look at into that to see how to help implement that if it's possible.
One of the approaches might be to talk to the company companies themselves and, you know, we get that information updated.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other further questions?
Um, yes, uh, I did have one last thing. I think, you know, we always assume that our truckers are are out of towners. Um, I do have like one or two residents who are, one of them, her husband is a a truck driver. And so he's out sometimes for a week or or a couple of days. And so her, her issue is that um, she wanted me to ask if he's able um, or allowed to bring his, his semi, of course, dropping the the cargo and and just bringing the the front of it um, and and make it home. Yeah, and he wants to kind of take it home to have his wife clean it for him. Um, because, you know, obviously he's out on the roads. I could only imagine what it looks like. Um, and so I I know she had brought that up before and I don't know if she contacted our our PT or not. Like, is that something that is going to be considered in the plan like for local truck drivers that may want to? Or I don't know how that works out in other cities that want to take it home to.
You can maybe just wait and answer that for them. Make out the front part of the tractor.
Well, uh, that would be a no. And and it has to do with our municipal code and with the beer's code. And it has to do with the size of the truck, the weight of the truck, um, narrowness of the streets, things like that. That's the reason tractors aren't allowed in the residential areas of city.
Yeah, okay, I told her I'd ask, so we got it answered. Thank you.
And that's why they end up over by the cemetery or to the other day, because that's counted.
Yeah. Yeah, our roads are not wide enough for cars from the residences along with tractor to get up in there.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, thank you, gentlemen, for that presentation and we look forward to coming back to this at a later time.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Leo. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right, the next presentation is our assistant planner, Ariana Mora, uh bringing us up to speed or giving us an update regarding ADUs.
The mayor of Quotum, I I did want to make a a correction that Ariana was promoted and she's an associate planner.
You're correct, that's the record of associate planner, Ariana Mora.
Let me just share my screen. All right. Good afternoon, council. I am honored to be the city of solid ad. I'll be doing a brief presentation on the pre-approved ADU plans for the city of solid ad. Um, hopefully, um, we answer some concerns we have from the community and questions and again, open to questions at the end of the presentation. So really quick, what are ADUs? So an ADU is an attached or detached uh, residential dwelling and that completes permanent living facilities for one or more uh, persons, including permanent provisions of living, sleeping, eating, cooking. Uh, and sanitation located in the same lot as a single family home. Um, in the visual, you can see there's different ADU types. Detached, attached, interior, interior, interior ADUs, which are considered JADUs. Um, and also, um depending on zoning, you can have them above garage and converter garage conversions. Um, that does not conform to the zoning. But um, these must be approved by the jurisdiction um, in thirty days. Uh, there are specific requirements for ADUs and fees. So anything under seven hundred and fifty square feet, ADUs um, do not have to, we can't apply impact fees uh, for new dwellings. Anything over five hundred square feet, school district fees apply. And that is um that is through this art, uh, solid by, solid item of our school district. Uh, moreover, HOA, homeowners association must allow ADUs if the space permits. Um, parking requirements are also um, still enforced that if there's no public transportation or a car sharing program within half a mile of the proposed ADU, then an extra parking space is required on site. Um, one thing to note is that one detached ADU and one junior ADU is allowed on a single family lot. So I know that's something um, that has been changed recently and um, is now being enforced. Uh, two detached ADUs are a lot of multifamily zoned areas, no more than three units, again, if this place permits. Um, all of these um, specifically for detached units, the forfeits that are enforced. Just a brief history for ADUs and solid ad. Currently, we have completed around sixty eighty U's. This, this goes with a mix of garage conversion, junior ADUs, attached ADUs and detached ADUs, which garage conversion and detached ADUs being the most popular here in solid ad. Um, at the time of this presentation, we had three ready to issue, which were not included in the sixty uh, ADU calculation and ten application were in review for a D. And so right now, we're 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 about seventy-three ADUs um, in Zaga. For these group plans, um, we would like to note that we did have a very um great collaboration with the King, uh, city of King City, um, and the Sign Path Studio. So they reached out to all South Monterey County jurisdictions to collaborate and share plans as well as sharing fees for these plans. And solid ad was the only jurisdiction to um, collaborate with King City on this project. Um, moreover, we also collaborated with the city of Salinas and they they have a far more advanced pre-approved ADU program. Um, and collaborating with them and getting the material and uh, more information on the pre-approved plans is also good. So this next slide shows the four different plans that the city of solid ad has. Um, I would like to know that there is a brief score footage typo on the plan set one B. It is not two hundred and twenty-three, but it's five hundred and twenty-three. Um, yeah. So it, it, our smallest pre-approved ADU plan is four hundred and ninety-five. Um, as you know, it's from four hundred and ninety-five square feet to seven forty-three. So uh, one important thing is that we are making these pre-approved plans to be economically feasible for those that are interested in having these plans. So anything under five hundred square feet did not, uh, school district did not apply, school district fees. Anything under seven hundred and fifty impact fees do not apply for the city. Uh, therefore, the intention for these plans is to provide more obviously living units that are regulated and mandated by the state, but also a um less cost-effective way for uh, someone to create uh, better plans and and maybe save some extra money there. Um, so those plans are provided in our city of solid our website. Uh, and if anyone needs copies or printouts, we are willing to print it up for anyone that wishes to review them um, and does not have access to a computer. These are brief designs that we have or are in the proof, pre-approved plans for different styles and these proposed styles are, the applicant is able to choose, however, planning uh, and building department enforced based on the design standards of the main dwelling. Therefore, uh, we have to enforce that the main dwelling is cohesive, the new ADU is cohesive with the main dwelling and enforce um, the material also being used for the the finishing material being used, making sure they're both cohesive. And um, even the color doesn't um, change compared to uh, the main dwelling. So these are the one-bedroom styles and the next slide would be the two-bedroom styles. So plan one, A and one B are one bedroom, plan two and two, two, two A, two B are two bedroom, um, as you can see here. So these are brief steps of how to use a pre-approved plans. Ultimately, it's best if someone who is interested in pre-approved plans to consult with building or planning um, staff here at the city of solid ad. I say building and planning because um, it is a collaborative effort between the building and planning departments. We're all under the same departments, I would say, I guess. We're different divisions, but uh, we're ultimately uh, one incapable to both um, tag team, anyone who wants to come in and make sure we accommodate appropriate kinds of planning or building is not available. Um, with, when we make these meetings, we do to make sure we address cost and how much per, the estimated cost between our permits uh, for new ADUs and making sure they understand why we're providing uh specific square footage of these pre-approved plans. Now, the big question that we're having with uh, residents is like, why are you providing bigger um square foot feet, plan, uh, prep plan plans for bigger ADUs? Um, it's because we're trying to make it uh, feasible for those that are making and constructing these units. Um, the processes provided in the graphic uh, on the presentation. Um, the processes provided in the graphic uh on the presentation, ultimately guiding and um staff is available. Um, to guide any applicant through the process. Um, from consultation to submitting the application online, the source of our. Uh, smart cup portal to then on scheduling inspections and then scheduling finals. So as mentioned, these plans are provided in our website, they are linked in our um, in the presentation. Um, if there's any questions for those who are interested or would like to schedule an appointment, the phone number is eight three one. Two, two, three, five, one, seven, zero, or eight three one, two, two, three, five, one, eight, five. Or uh, you can email building permits at cityofsolidat.com to schedule an appointment based on the applicant's availability. And we'll make sure we can help them um through the process and provide estimate that's needed for the construction. Um, at this time, that concludes my presentation, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to ask.
Uh, council, any questions, or let's, let's, why don't we take it out to the public first, anybody, the chambers have any questions regarding the ADU? Seeing none, we'll take it out to the public, anybody have any questions out in Zoom world? Seeing none, bringing it back to the council, council, questions for Ariana?
Um, yes, through the chair, I, I, first of all, thank you for the presentation, I congratulate you. While being served, um, yes, I'm, I'm really excited to see this because this is something that I'm pretty sure most of us on council, including yourself, probably. Get these calls constantly um asking and wanting, you know, plans, um, because people don't always know where to start. Um, I'm just curious, and so my question is, when it comes to the occupancy that you're seeing, I know people sometimes converse with you when they're sitting in front of you. Um, are these more, do you think, being is as a generational housing for families or a set rental, is there like a, I'm just curious?
Well, um, from experience, I can say that those that are interested for, for families definitely come in and talk to staff regarding the process, how expensive it is. And um how they move forward, so I definitely get more of those consultations. Um, when it comes to um those that are renting it just to um build more, I guess, that's the question that you were aiming for. Usually, they hire their own arch- architect or designer to move forward with the sizing that they want. Um, but based on the conversation with residents, we do get more of like, this is a unit for my family. So I think definitely having pre-approved plans for that purpose is is very, very good, um, and it's um. Less cost effective on them for them to, to have a unit that not only helps them construct, but it's also based on um. Proper review on building code and health and safety as well, so.
Yeah, and the square footage is pretty generous, almost seven hundred something, awesome, thank you.
Through the chair, um, just a couple of questions, what, what, what's the smallest that a ADU can be, I know that you have this. This one was under the five hundred to try to help them out with not having the impact fees from both the city and the school district. Um, what, what's the smallest?
Yeah, so it.
Or is there a small?
It depends on the type of, of ADU, so JADUs, which are in, inside the, the existing structure, can't be less than five, more than five hundred square feet. Garage conversions have to be the existing garage space, so they cannot extend um square footage, so they have to be there. Usually, we get um three hundred square feet garage conversions, and that is approved because it's the existing space according to what the state mandates. Um, for detached units, um, we've seen three hundred square feet, but also depending on their setbacks, if it's appropriate for them to. Um, have that livable space, we also have to enforce health and safety, so the amount of livable space required per room that allows you to build. Um, the number of the, of bedrooms you want in your existing space, so there is definitely flexibility on spacing. Um, right now, we wanted to base it more off the general sizing that other jurisdictions are also using. Um, and make it simpler, again, going with the thresholds of school district fees and impact fees.
Right, and then the second question would be, what is the largest that, that maybe it can be?
The largest, um, twelve hundred square feet, a thousand two hundred square feet, um, and that's based on specific criteria, so. Um, when it's an attached ADU. Yeah, you can do up to twelve hundred square feet, but your main building, it can only be fifty percent of your existing main home. So let's say your main dwelling is a thousand two hundred, and attached ADU can only go up to six hundred square feet. With the detached unit, unfortunately, we can only go up to twelve hundred square feet, and that is um what the state mandates.
Okay, great, and then on average, about how long, I mean, we've, we've had sixty units so far, how long is the process taking, just on average, just?
Yeah.
What is that?
So required by law, we can't go past thirty days, usually, our review time is less than two weeks. Uh, with these pre-approved plans, uh, you're going to see a less review time, probably within the same week to be approved. We're only approving the site plan to making sure that the ADU is appropriately placed on the property. So making sure the setbacks are good, water connections are good, played on the side plan, as well as making sure um the unit is cohesive. The new ADU is cohesive with the main building, so we're enforcing those features we should not take. We would assume it's not going to take one in the two that we currently have.
Hmm, and then in, in regards, and I know we received, uh, I'm sure there's a lot of positiveness, uh, positive comments as well. But there's been some neighbors that have come in, so what's the consideration as far as neighbors are concerned with complaints that they have regarding? Uh, you know, park, parking seems to be the, the biggest issue, uh, have there, you know, is there any consideration to that? I know that state law doesn't really, you know, you have to create them.
Yeah.
But is there any consideration in regards to that, because I know that there's some, some uh information that you provided in regards to this?
Yeah, so we're doing our first one-on-one consultation with the applicant, we definitely give them what is required and what we recommend. Um, usually, we recommend if they have the space to provide that onsite parking, however, we tell may, may not be required, that's up to you. Ultimately, we do enforce the one-half mile radius, um, making sure um that if there is a bus stop nearby. Legally, we can't ask them to provide that parking space. Um, I know, uh, in the future, when we're getting more and this two bus stops, it will definitely be a more of an issue. Because we're, we're, we're gonna have more public transportation, or it could be helpful for us, because now there's more public transportation stops closer to families. Um, that can take advantage of that.
And is there any noticing when that happens, as far as when maybe use, I mean, I, I have no idea.
Yeah, no, no, we're not legally, we're, we're not required to, to notice, yeah. Unless there is a concern, where a neighbor says, you know, they're building an ADU, we can definitely let them know it's permitted or not. It is public record information, um. So in the case it isn't, we definitely will give our code enforcement or building official onsite to make sure it's an appropriate and permitted ADU.
All right, thank you, that's one of my questions.
Um, they have a lot of questions that I had, um, uh, thank you so much for the presentation on the new additional ADUs, um. So no questions on those, for, for me, it's, uh, so in other words, to put a, a new um ADU in, in, on the lot itself. How large does that lot has to be, and how up close to the property line can that? You know, ADU go?
Yeah, so the four foot, four foot setbacks, so anything from the backyard fence, side yard fence is four feet. And it has to be um between uh ten feet away from the main building. Yeah, from the main dwelling, yeah, for detached units.
And also, how big a lot does that, existing home that's on, does it can be five thousand, can be seven thousand, or depends on the, the existing house that's on?
It, it depends on the existing house that's on it, and the, if those dimensions are appropriate for the new ADU. So let's say you have a two thousand square foot lot, but the house in the front is very small. Uh, but you can fit a four hundred foot, four hundred square feet ADU with the proper setbacks. Um, with ten feet away from the main dwelling, four foot setbacks around, then we would be, would permit that.
That answers that question, then the second one was that, um, regarding uh existing conversions, like the garages, um. Uh, I see that we have those plans and it's gonna expedite and streamline it, which is great, um, another way to get through the process, because all we hear about how. Terrible, uh, you know, the planning department, it's how terrible the city is, that they slow everything down, and this is a good way to streamline it, so unfortunately, we have it, so thank you guys for that. Uh, but with existing ones, do we have any set plan for uh? Uh, the garages or those type that we need to see, does it have to have a window on it, does it have the front driveway block? Uh, does it have to have a bathroom, does it have to have a kitchen, uh, separate exit and entry?
Yeah, we don't have standardized plan for garage conversions, we have more of a checklist that is required. Uh, for garage conversions, usually, you do have to take out the main door of the garage and replace it. Uh, and have a private entrance and entryway for those that are living in the unit. Um, the reason why there's no standard plans for garages because of different garage sizes. Um, so they do have to conform with whatever size they have, and you just provide them the requirements of a kitchen, a bedroom, and a bathroom. Um, as the minimum requirement.
Can the existing uh driveway still be used if they convert it?
Yeah, yes, yes, the, the, so for a single family home, parking, uh, the garage space is considered a covered parking area. By AD, uh, ADU laws says that we don't have to replace it, so you, you can't use existing driveway for parking. But um you don't have to add additional space for garage conversions.
Okay, and then, and on those converters, I know on the new ones that take, it's taken about two weeks, um, how long does it take for the conversions of the garages?
A lot, usually around two weeks, yeah, if not less, um, we usually give our own deadline for two weeks. Um, sometimes it's less, our building officials very thick are reviewing garage conversions more so, um, so it's probably less than two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
Um, yes, um, my, my last question has to do with, um, with, um. Like a projection of impact fees for, or public service impact uh projections, and I, I do understand that it is seven hundred and fifty square feet, I believe, or less, there's no. Um, impact fee to the builder, the homeowner, however, um. Uh, and, and again, this is something that you're more of an expert than I am, so I, I'm trying to understand if the people that are gonna be occupying. Um, the ADUs, are they coming from out of town to where now? You know, we're gonna have to maybe as a city start projecting, because I feel like now that we have plans, it's gonna be. You know, more, more, um, uh, an easier process to go through, so we might have more people doing that, especially with housing. Um, increasing the prices of, I don't know, that's something that we're looking into, like public service impacts, like when it comes to fire, um, police department. Just, you know, we can see needs, and that's costing the girl in the city.
Yeah, that's a great question, so um, a- again, it's a state mandated thing that under seven fifty, you can't charge impact fees. Um, I think obviously you would want that since it comes back to the community for public safety, water, sewer, and anything like that. Um, I think, um, i- it's always a good idea to look into. Um, as mentioned, those that do come in for consultations are mostly those that are want, wanting to have families in here. Um, which could be a good or a bad thing based on, on your comments. Um, so therefore, we can definitely take that into consideration. Um, but what we've seen also is that there is that group of people that want to build bigger space. And therefore, maybe the pre-approved plans may not be an option for them, which then could trigger the. A unit bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet, so we did just deal the units bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet, which um. Allow us to get those impact fees.
Are you seeing more like, um, is it, and I'm trying to understand, is it more like, maybe that there's like the main house? Maybe it's over, overcrowded, and then they build the ADU so people that are already existing, living there are the ones holding now, or is it like new families that are?
What I've seen is that, that there are too many people, or maybe other families are growing, and they want that unit in the back. What we've also seen is that maybe the, they have been displaced from, or their, their lease hasn't been expired, maybe apartment areas here in Salida. So we did have so few cases where they were no longer able to find a place here in Salida, and their family decided to convert. Uh, either the garage or create an ADU for, for them to stay here in town.
Okay, thank you, I was just trying to, like, if we as a, you know, city need to start preparing for an influx of people.
Yeah.
Coming to the ADUs, even though, you know, obviously, we're not getting that impact fee, but if, if we have more people residing, then yeah, we need to be able to accommodate. You know, basic city services.
And, and another thing to note that, you know, this is a new uh housing unit in Salida, which does count to our arena numbers. Um, so if we do, I retire anymore for Salida, residents who want to stay here and come, can be a viable option for them.
Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And just, just one, one of the questions, sir, um, is there any parameters on PDU's in regards to the um ADUs?
Well, I guess I would have to clarify for what. Oh, okay.
The project development.
Yes. Um, when they're making, I guess, new subdivisions or anything like that, is that what, to clarify?
So, so for example, we've got some existing uh PUDs that exist, I'm just wondering, are there any parameters there in regards to ADUs?
We would have to probably look at the restrictions placed when we're going through the planning permit process. Um, I think the, the mandate for these ADUs are really. More so general and in the sense they were, it allows a lot of flexibility for new homeowners to um have ADUs. Again, the big important factor is the space allowing us to create a new ADU in the property. So if it's zone multifamily, you can have up to two, if the space, sorry, I think it's three, if the space permits. Uh, if it's single families on the area, then um we would um make sure, based on how much available space is there for an ADU to be there.
Okay, and I'm just curious, because at least someone that I'm referring to has zero latelines, and so the space on the side is probably. Less, or at least four feet or maybe less, so I'm just wondering if that.
Yeah. Though, no, I believe the, the setbacks still apply to the ADUs, four foot setbacks, um, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and maybe the chair can make that. Um, some of the PUDs, you can also make a, because of the lack of. Spacing in the private drive, you could probably make a finding, uh, that safety would make it um. Here impossible to build an ADU, um, probably, we'd have to amend the ordinance, but. I know, um, having discussions before I came here about the same issue with PUDs, and certainly. Um, where they don't need those four foot setbacks for the separation required in the building code, um.
Of the ten feet.
Yeah, you, you would have issues building in those areas.
Yeah, which is the main factor to deny ADU's health and safety, um, and not meeting appropriate um space requirements for that even, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, unless there are any other questions, thank you so much, Ariana.
Thank you.
About supposed to be a planner. All right, we're gonna move on to our consent calendar, that concludes our presentation, all matters listed on the consent calendar. Calendar are considered routine by the city council, will be adopted by one actionary council, and if any council member has any questions or wishes to make a statement or step an item. In that event, the mayor will remove the item from the consent calendar for separate consideration. Item from, from C one through C fifteen, council, any item?
Um, good, chair, I'd like to call C one and C five, please.
C one, and what's it all?
C five.
C five?
Uh, just the C seven.
Well, that would be C six. Yeah, C six.
C six, yeah. So, if that was said, we have, uh. C eleven as well, yeah. All right, so we have C one, C five. C five.
Yeah.
C six. C eleven.
And C seven.
And C seven. With that, can we get a motion to approve the other ones with the exception of C one, C five, C six, C seven, and C eleven?
Oh, go ahead, make that motion to uh, uh, pass the uh consent calendar, minus those that were referred to.
Well, a motion, a second?
Second.
There are motion, a second, all in favor, if you have a great thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passed, moving on to C one.
Um, yes, so I posted one on the minutes, because I wanted to do a request, if it's possible, on the list of the, um. Of those who gave public comments on the meeting, are we able to put? Um, whether they're Salida residents or whether they were visitors? And if that's not, um. And if that's not um permissible, then can we put the percentage of uh solid versus, yes? That's both end of public comments.
All the for table.
Yeah, the, uh, really chair, just that clarification, do you want the name of the person in there? Um, whether or not they were um. From Solidad or upside? Is that, is that how, is that each person is listed, is that how you want to designate that or?
Um, if, sure, if that's uh, if that's allowed, I'm actually should help to counsel.
Yeah, yeah, it's allowed, that was, uh, although we'll have three categories of people, right? We'll have people who lived in Solidad, people who were from outside and people who declined to state where their residence was.
Yeah, correct.
Um. So you, you would accept either, if, if possible, the uh, the identification for each speaker or a summary that would say. What people fell into those categories, like fifty percent were from city Solidad, twenty percent were from outside, thirty percent declined to provide, would that work too?
That works, yes, whatever, we, we can hear that, thank you, yeah.
Right, so we'll bring this item then back with the change.
Yeah, with the, with the categorization for each of those.
So we'll table this one, or what do you want to do with C one, just bring it back, uh?
Yeah, I just asked it to be brought back after.
Okay, uh, C five?
Um, I requested C five. And um, the reason I requested C five was because we um, the term, I'm not sure if uh. If we did a recall check. Um, but it does have a recall and, and the recalls for a plastic, uh, plastic fuel tube, so what happens is. That plastic fuel tube can run. Um, with one of the brake ones, and if that happens, um, if you'll have it wiggling around, which may cause a fuel leak. And if ignited, that could just set the, the truck afwaze. So it's definitely a concern of mine, um, and I'm not sure, I didn't see that it had already been taken care of. Uh, by Toyota, so. Just wanted to, to check to see if maybe that was done at the, at the car dealership, but it's usually done through the actual manufacturer, yeah.
So, since you brought that up, the last vehicle we purchased, um, we developed a policy. That we won't accept the vehicle until the dealer that we're buying it from has adequately taken care of any. We call prior to the city purchasing the vehicle.
Yeah.
So unless they can get it cleared and determined safe from that rubbing the brake line and fuel line, uh, yeah. We're not obligated to purchase the vehicle unless that recall's cleared.
Perfect, and it did have two recalls, but that was not like a major um safety concern, yeah, yeah.
But this one is more serious, but.
Yes, definitely.
I realize how serious we were.
Yes. Um, so that's my, my only thing, as long as those um. Uh, things are, are taken care of, the repairs, and I think also, and I need to correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I can believe that there's no actual um parts. I believe that you understand the process of making them, so they might have a quick fix, which might be uh just clamping. Clamping there and then later after quick fix, so that's also something I take into consideration, or at least to bring up.
Yeah, that's, we might pass on that vehicle if it's not completely repaired with factory parts. And Megan put in the option in case something like that comes up, we have a little wiggle room to, to get a different vehicle.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
All right, C six, uh, that's mine, if uh. We get just a brief overview, which one I was the city council approving. Uh, the amendment for the classification salary schedule for twenty twenty three?
Yes, happy to.
Sure, I just wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt, I didn't know if you wanted to take each item separately once they're pulled. Or if you wanted to hear all the, take the comments and then come back to them.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'd like to do, go ahead and go through, get through them and, and then that we could determine what C one we're gonna move on and.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, so the item before you this, uh, this evening is an amendment to our um job classification and salary plan. And the reason for the amendment, um, as stated in the staff report. Is some of our local, well, actually all of our local South County cities have um. Moved to amend their salary plans related to their sworn positions within their police departments. The main cause of this is the, the number of vacancies and the shortfall uh and the difficulty in recruiting um public safety officers. So with, with some recent changes that are, are neighboring South County cities have made to their salary plans. It has actually placed the city of Solidad. Slightly below every one of our South County cities, and so we want to make sure that we're competitive. Um, and in some cases, this increase will just bring us to parity with them, and then we have. Um, negotiations coming up in the spring of two thousand and twenty four, where we will deal with future increases in the future NYU. Um. Got it. Just as a note, um, the city has met with the, the, um, police officers association. Uh, through the meet and confer process as required. Um, we reached a tentative agreement, surprised they, they didn't disagree. Uh, and the same evening they held a vote and they ratified the tentative agreement. So that the item before you this evening is for the council now to ratify this. The implementation of this increase would happen the first full pay period following tonight's meeting. The cost is about ninety five to a hundred thousand dollars, and it is currently projected. That that will be paid for out of the current budget without an amendment due to the number of vacancies that we currently have. So we believe we can cover it with the existing budget. And happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions, comments? No questions, thank you, Mark. Uh, just briefly, I'll comment on, on it, uh, just want to say that, uh, again, looking to keep parity and. And to uh, understand how difficult it is for recruitment. And therefore, um, I think it was prudent, uh, this comes to move forward and for staff to bring this forward to ensure that we have. Uh, professionals on the street, quality individuals working for this department, so thank you for that, gee, thanks for bringing that forward. Megan, or excuse me? Yeah, same here. Uh, moving on to item C eleven?
Yes.
Excuse me, C seven, you jump in here.
The only question I had, uh, so, uh, I noticed that there was a thirty eight thousand five hundred, there was an increase in the budget of what was being. Had been allocated, um, so it's to not e- uh exceed a hundred forty four thousand seven hundred eighty, so I just wanted to get clarity, is that? Specifically for design or is that, uh, you're parting C quad?
No, um, through the chair, it's um actually for design, um, we want an opportunity to. Um, take the excitement from the container village, and since we are doing front street maintenance. We wanted an opportunity to see what kind of.
Okay.
Um, integration, we can do some art and, you know, looking at some creative. Uh, inexpensive ways to, to um tie, tie the areas together.
Okay, I just wanted to understand if it was just, you know, continuing with the village uh project, the container village project, or if we were. Looking at other parts of the downtown, so just wanted to get clarity and also for our public to understand. Uh, that we are moving forward with the uh container village, and the reason we are expanding uh. The scope of work is because we're trying to see what else can be done for downtown to revitalize our downtown, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for bringing that forward, uh, any other question? Move on to C eleven?
On uh, C eleven, um, Don, uh, the question I had regarding was um on well ten. Uh, well, ten, is that the uh, uh, well, it's been rehabbed several times, or is that well nine?
So nine is out at the end of Los Coches Road, ten is over, there's two on San San Diego, eleven's the lower one and one's the upper.
Okay.
So those are both uh developer um. Uh, provided wells, and I don't recall.
I was trying to remember which one was the one that's been rehabbed quite a bit of times, which one is that, is that seven, I don't recall anymore.
The one by Little Lee, it's down again right now, emergency repair, nine at the end of Los Coches, then. Well, that's what we had to put Triton on, but seven at Boston, we've done a couple of times, like, ten and eleven over in San Francisco.
Got it, I, I was just trying to remember which numbers which, and so I was, I was confused, I was like that with my question, just to see if that's the ones for rehab, I'm good with it.
Next time we'll put a location number. Thank you, a- any other questions? Seeing there's no question. So, Moira, water manager, standing by in case there's any comments or questions. That's good, all right. Don took care of that, thank you, Don. Uh, all right, so being that there's no questions, then uh, Moses took his hand down. Uh, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. We'll entertain a motion for uh, C five, six, seven, and C eleven?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve uh the items that were called on the consent calendar.
Sorry? A motion and a second, all in favor, so if I by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All items passed, and then C one, uh, staff will bring back to us at another time?
Yeah.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, move on to uh public hearing, uh, public hearing number one. Evening, Mayor Brooke and council members, Don Workar, City Board Director. Um, this item is a um. Uh, we did a first reading and introduction of the floodplain management ordinance update back on August sixteen, twenty twenty three. The reason we're doing this update. Is to uh. Be compliant with FEMA's current regulations regarding floodplain management, basically. Uh, for the most part, the changes in this ordinance are just administrative, some variances, some adjustments to procedures. But nothing subsequent that would affect uh floodplain insurance availability to the city of Solidad. Um, we hired Chapman Wheeler to compare our current ordinance with FEMA's latest guidelines for floodplain management ordinances. And made this uh, uh, corrections. Again, we uh, uh, introduced this for public comment back in August, and tonight we need to do open a public hearing for more public comment. Hearing any, and then close the public hearing and adopt if it comes, so. All right, thank you, so at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to uh, uh, the public for any uh questions or comments? Anyone in the chambers? Seeing no one in the chambers, any, anybody out there in virtual world? Seeing none, we're going to close a public hearing. And we'll move to uh council, council, any questions?
I have any questions?
If we have any questions, then uh, council action. We can go ahead and uh, right now it's just the public hearing, are we gonna take action?
You can take action.
All right, we'll entertain a motion, and you're gonna want us to read ordinance seven sixty three.
Uh, I think that somebody already read the title in when we were introducing the matter, so all you need to do at this point is to just go ahead and. Uh, we need a motion to adopt, uh, and what do you believe then, read by time, I mean, this we've already taken care of. All right.
Okay, um, I make a motion to um.
Adopt.
To adopt ordinance number five sixty three.
And we by ten one, I read by time moment.
So I have to again?
No.
Oh.
All right, we have a motion and a second? My child?
I'll second it, yes.
All the favors, signify if I say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, I don't have. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to business now, uh, resolution or two three, um. If you do, 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 oh, very exciting, uh, with a community uh foundation. Jessica here to present for us.
Good evening, Mayor Lieutenant, Council, I am Jessica Potts, I am the Recreation Manager. Um, tonight bringing uh back to us uh for consideration, um. Uh, creating a, a couple of special funds through the Community Foundation of Monterey County, um, this was brought to you back in July. And at that time, it was um a little more outside, a little more scholarship focused, which then. Prompted a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, and so I have uh experience in my past life. With uh working with the Community Foundation of Monterey County, uh, with fund development, stewardship funds, um, so I'm a little player and. Actually, I am the one that prompted this um back a little over a year ago, I reached out to the Arts Council. And I've been uh trying to look for uh ways to aid our programming. At that time, I was trying to find a way that we could do a guitar program, and if you do a guitar program, you need guitars. And so when I reached out to them, at that time, they said, in order to apply for their grants, we needed a five oh one C three, which we don't have. So, um, without a five oh one C three, uh, we're limited in what we can apply to our grants. Uh, and without that, we don't have that tax deductible ability for fundraises, sponsorships, donations, uh, and, and, and grants. Uh, we have, we have need for those funds, we have a building that was built in nineteen ninety three, so. If my mouth is right, it is younger than me, and it is now uh hitting that thirty year old mark. Um, over the years, with age, some maintenance deficiencies, we really seen a toll be taken on that building. We've done a lot for it, but unfortunately, we have a lot more to do to turn up. Right around one point five, maybe a little bit higher than that, um, and unless Ben's willing, willing to write a check, we got some problems. Um, so with that, we need upgrades, uh, we need renovations, we are currently working on the kitchen through some arbit funds. But like many things, when you open Pandora's box, once you go for one thing, a lot more things appear that are going to become necessary as a part of that project. Uh, we have some compliance issues and we need to bring it up to current standards, so for that, we really need to start a capital campaign fund. Uh. On top of that, we want to improve our programs of accessibility, that's very, been very important from the beginning with the creation of the Recreation Department to make it. Uh, accessible to all, um, and then that comes in a lot of different, different ways. Uh, some of that is providing the equipment that is needed to be able to provide these programs, like I mentioned with the guitars. Uh, theater equipment, uh, putting on those theater performances. They're very costly, and we don't want the community to have to pay to be a part of the program and then pay for their costumes and pay for all those other things, like you see, you know, in the, the larger productions. Uh, so in order to be able to try to do some of those sponsorships would be great. Um. Participation in programs, so we've mentioned scholarship before, um, scholarships come in a, in a variety of form, we do have, what was it? Uh, passed back in October, which was a scholarship fund that is part of the measure S. Uh, so we do still have that in, in action, um, it has, we, we offer it to everybody that comes in, and honestly, we've only had, um. Uh, one person applied for it, the two people applied for it, and one of them found out that they coach, they get re-registration, so they rescinded, which was. Bonus for us because now we had a coach, um. What, um, what we need as far as uh participation though is that we need to be able to do some programs, like for seniors, for instance. That are very, very accessible, and maybe that means we get a grant that pays for those registrations, right now I'm uh looking to do a grant, uh. Uh, called the Outdoor Equity Grant, which would create a program, and then that would cover a lot of those costs. Um, so having this would help that. And, and you know, with rising uh costs, we really want to use that load on measure S as much as possible, so this would help that as well. So the outcome of that would be that we have two uh funds that we are talking to the Community Foundation about creating, one of them has a capital fund, one of them is a special fund, special purpose fund. Uh. The, I'm hoping, what it would do is it would create a holding account in which donations, sponsorships, grants would be run through, they would hold it. And so it wouldn't be a, a catch release so much as a whole invest. And then when we get to those points where we have that capital uh expenditure, we would then submit a uh request for those funds. Uh, through a, a pre, pre-process, and then we would prove that that's what those funds are being used for, and they would release it for those reasons. Um. Uh, right now, we would need a thousand dollars each to start the funds. Uh, we have that coming out of the recreation budget at this point, so there would be no additional cost with that one. Um, having provided you all the information, I'm sure you gone through, I am now available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public, see if they have any questions, anybody in the chamber? Seeing none, anybody out there in uh, Zoom World? None, bring it back to the council, council, questions? Comment?
Um, yes, I have a, a couple of. Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for your presentation, and also for all the hard work that you do over at the Parks and Rec and the community center. I appreciate it. And, you know, as well as our community appreciates it as well. And so my question was just, you were talking about the scholarships that we had, I guess, implemented back in October. It really wasn't, isn't being utilized as much as we thought that it would be. But they are public funds, and I do recall back, I think it was in June or July, when we had a meeting, it was stated that those scholarships were funded through the art of funds, if I remember correctly. And you said another with the measure S, so just for transparency to our public, just making sure that it is the measure S?
Yes, that was a statement back in July, and it is actually through the measure S funds.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then my other question was, so I guess, once you, if we, if this does pass, and we go ahead and do those, those two different funds, how long would it take the process, if you know, to when you need the money and you ask for it, to when you actually have it in your hand?
They would need the, the written proof, and then they would release it within a couple of business days.
Okay, that's pretty clear. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
I have a question and a comment. Well, we're so a comment. This gives us an opportunity, well, first question. Question is, the administrative cost for us to utilize them is going to be one percent for one fund and two percent for the other fund, is that correct?
Correct.
So obviously, that administrative cost, to begin with, I said, well, how much, how much are we giving away? And this, this is minimal, if anything, however, it gives us the vehicle to seek out larger funds, grants from state and local, I mean, sponsors, the ones that we said and said, let's look to our local farmers, let's look to our local business people, or local people to help, you know, fund some of the stuff that needs to be done. Because like you said, the, the community center has been here for a long time now, and you're doing so many exciting things out there, and it's kind of, with some money and some funding, we can do a lot more for this community, and at the benefit of the community. So I want to thank you for that. With that, I have no other questions. Council?
I didn't have any questions, comments?
Comments?
I do have a comment, sure. You know, I would agree with what Mayor Portman, Jimenez mentioned, is the administrative cost is, I mean, that's extremely low, I mean, that's great, because I know that for most nonprofits, you know, we're talking nine percent, fourteen percent is, is pretty, pretty normal for any kind of grant or any kind of anything that, that moves forward with a contract, that's, that's extremely low. So I, I, I too think that there's opportunities with this. I know that in, back in June or July, whenever we had that meeting, I brought up a lot of questions of trying to understand what the process was and why we were doing it in this manner, rather than creating our own, you know, foundation or our own way of doing it. But, you know, seeing the, the cost this way, I think this might be the fastest tool to be able to utilize. And so we should embrace it at this point and, and figure out how it can be utilized so that we can better serve our public and to really have more programming for our youth. I know in the past, different organizations that come in, and then they've left because there's no special funding. There is no funding for them. When we talk about guitars, not guns, when we talk about just a number of organizations that have come through, Paper Wing Theater, there's been so many different organizations that have come through, just, you know, get a one-time, a through-time, three-time, five-time kind of presence, and then off to some of their community, just because we didn't have that, that funding ability to be able to sustain it. So hopefully with this, we're able to sustain programs in the long term and purchase those things that need to do, that we need for these types of programs. And then also on the capital campaign side, to look at the renovations, not only of the building itself and what's needed, but actually the expansion of that possibility of that expansion of the building, because we have outgrown it, you know. Mayor, Mayor Portman, Jimenez was here during that time when that building was built, and when they went to, I don't recall if it was CYA or who you guys went to exactly, to get some of that funding. I know you guys did one, and I'm not sure who else participated in that, in that, in that funding. But for me, I think that, you know, this was in nineteen ninety-three, and the population back then was so much smaller. We've grown a lot, we have, you know, I, I came to this community twenty-two years ago, and back then, twenty-two years ago, we didn't have food school, we didn't have a lot of the stuff that has been happening since then. And so I think that we have to figure out how we can grow it. So I'm glad that you're looking at creative ways to try to figure out how we can do that.
Great, thank you. With that, any other, when we get in, I'm going.
Sorry, yeah, through the chair, I have a, a comment, and I know it's the appropriate time to say it or not, but I know as, as we're talking about different, I guess, services and different things we want to bring, bring up or bring to our town, like music, which I think is so important, the arts, theater, all these things that our, our children in solid, that our rural towns don't get the opportunity to be exposed to, that's so important. My thing that I wanted to, to just bring back to the forefront is daycare. I, you know, I really, my children are all grown, my youngest one is seventeen, she'll be out in a year. But however, you know, it is a very important and, and basic need of our families, and you guys do a great summer program. I follow you on Facebook, and it'll even like chalk on the ground, or I think that's in a painted a car or something. I don't know whose car that was. They put paint all over a car, very creative. You know, and I love seeing that the summer, summer camp, the spring camp, and, you know, these parents are bringing their children, you know, to be, to be taken care of and entertaining, to grow their little minds as well and their abilities. They're not thinking, where are these children during, you know, the non, the non-spring, non, non-summer camp? So I, I don't know their, you know, latchkey kids, but I think our, our parents and our, our parents who really take care of our children also need that structure and, you know, that you guys offer. So I would love to see that girl maybe a little bit more going along with, you know, measure S, that could also include the daycare was part of it as well. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And that, that is one missing item that we forget about, is, is that childcare, being able to provide that, because there's such a need, you know. There's such a need, so with that, we can work on some, eventually incorporating that or looking to, to incorporate that into some of the program or some of the, I know we're, we're limited on our facility and how much space we have to give us to have the things, but that is something to keep in the forefront. So with that said, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to move forward, resolution number six thousand.
Next second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say with my by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passive. Thank you, Jessica, so much for that presentation and that creativeness to go find it. Now moving on to number two, council discussion on a, my goodness, we've been talking about this mini grant for a long time. Or if you think there's a light at the end of the tunnel here, let me say. We have a Seuss here to present. So the mini grant, so after the last session, Megan and I, we went back and did some research on what other cities we're doing. The cities that, you know, we emulate the most is the city of Soladad. They already have a well-established mini grant program. And so in conversations with Carmen Gil, we decided, you know, let's have a conversation and see what we can incorporate from them. And so my presentation today will cover a little bit of the background, proposed criteria, the application process, the requirements, and of course, that of questions. Now, I'm going to present here is obviously a condensed version of what you have in your packet. Not to condense, you know, there were a lot of important points. But just a little bit on the background, this originally came in April sixth, twenty twenty-two, before my time, of course. And then it got brought back in March and April twenty-three. So when we rolled out that initial program, we received nine applications. But, you know, it was decided that the application process was a little bit too basic, that it was not as fleshed out as we would like it to be. And so council voted to reject the fourth link of the application. And then, like I mentioned, we researched several cities, and we are emulating City of Soladad's community action grant program. So previously approved criteria, this was the criteria that was brought to council and was already approved, you know, to be able to complete the grant within the established timeline. It must be work done within the boundaries of our city, and must have a specific scope and cannot be used for administrative support. You must admit a final report within thirty calendar days of completion, and must have a five oh one C three or a repeated physical sponsor, and of course, implement city council votes. So what we are proposing, the little amendment to those criteria, is to eliminate that nonprofit status. We believe that this can speak to some of the council members' concern that maybe there are some nonprofits or some groups in the community that, for whatever reason, do not have the resources to acquire a five oh one C three status, but would still benefit greatly from this grant. We saw that a lot of the applicants were well-established groups or groups that were not from Soladad. And so we believe that this will support more grassroots organizations. Of course, I say this saying that there will be a little bit more oversight if we do go ahead and approve groups that do not have a five oh one C three status, but that is one, one of the proposed criteria. In eligible groups, we included this, but obviously not limited to those not with no involvement, those all of that residents, groups seeking funding for religious activity, academic research, debt exception, or legal settlements, campaign funding, business expenses, ongoing operational expenditure and/or scholarships. And of course, any group that, any group that wants to do a civic project, we do expect them to have a minimum of two or more volunteers from the city of Soladad, and so this would help build the city of Soladad, you know, civic components. And so we encourage the following groups to apply, and for this, we also ask for council to support, to spread the word. As the community manager, you know, I've been here over a year, I still have access to all the community members that you have as council members. And so senior citizen groups, children and youth groups, arts groups, advocacy groups, supporting neighborhood improvement, and neighborhood or apartment association. So the process is a lot like last time. We do want any group interested to participate in an information session. This would help, you know, folks to, you know, not get their hopes up in case they don't meet the criteria, and they'll be able to learn right then and there. And the new system will encourage groups to apply from five hundred to five thousand. Every group in the last pool went straight for the five thousand, and so this would help us to see if they need that. And so here's some sample questions that, like I said, all of them are in your packet. A good deal of them, you know, we took, you know, we created them, but we also took some from the city of Soladad. You know, what is the purpose of the group, what activities or events does the group organize? Why is this project needed, what is the total funding requested? And then, you know, we want to have a rating system, which was something that was completely absent in our last iteration of this program. And so we want to have it from zero to five, you know, one to five, my apologies. And these would kind of be the, how we measured it, right? Does it have a community benefit? Does it support the leadership of Soladad residents? Where is the reach, is it cost-effective? Are, is the group leveraging other resources? And then, you know, the completeness of the application, is the application something that looks well-done? Like it was, you know, rushed right before the, right before the deadline? And we're hoping that groups that we consider achieve a seventy percent higher rating in order to receive funding. So our view of the requirements, like I mentioned, participate in mandatory orientation, use grants of war only for the purposes stated in the application, keep our receipts for project purposes. This one is of particular importance for those non-five oh one degrees. Allow city and media coverage and publication of the group and project activities. So we want to be able to celebrate those groups, submit a grant report, and make a brief presentation to city council. So, like I mentioned, the full details are in your packet, but, you know, we're hoping that this time around, like I said, with the help of our music manager, Megan Hunter, we have proposed here a much more robust application process. Alright, thank you for that presentation. Questions, we're going to take it out to the public. Anyone from chambers, any questions? Seeing none? Out there in virtual world, none? Back to the council, council, any questions for Jesus?
I have a question. So I, I, I think that the way it was done is a lot better. I think there's a lot more, like you said, more robust. And the one piece, I think that for me, that I'd like to figure out, and I'm not sure if we can include that, because of the rating system, I'm not quite understanding how each one of those would be rated. So you've got the different categories, there's six of, I think there's six of them there. So of the six, is that going to be sixteen point seven percent of each one is going to, is that the maximum on each category? Or how, how will that work? And so for me, that's the piece that I'm, I'm not quite understanding. Should there only be five so that it's twenty percent, so it's easy for you guys to figure it out? Or, and then the last piece is, I know that for the county, which is something completely different, they do a shop local campaign for the county of Monterey. And in the shop local campaign, there are points added for those that are within the county of Monterey. So if it's an organization, if it's, you know, a business in that case, you know, they get, you know, if they're a business from the, the county of Monterey, they get, you know, ten points. If they're, you know, a business that's corporate, but they have an office in, in, in the county of Monterey, they may get, you know, four points or two points or whatever, and if they don't have, then they get zero points for that category. I'm just wondering if there's a way that maybe we could include, because we really do want to focus on anything from here, from the, you know, the city of Soladad, any organizations, any advocacy groups, whatever the, that neighborhood group is, you know, maybe they should have some extra points, and maybe that could be a category to utilize. But if they're from within the county of Monterey, they should have some points as well. And those that aren't from the county of Monterey, maybe they should not be included in that part of it, but they still can, you know, because they have volunteers in Soladad, because they're doing stuff in Soladad, they should have all those other points. And I'm just wondering if that's a category that we could add in there, just because, you know, it would be great to kind of foster our, our, our folks and our, our, our community groups.
Definitely, so those categories, the, the broad categories should be in your packet, as here are the questions. Some of them, they would include, you know, the number of residents that they hope to involve. Now, I can't remember off the top of my head if there is different points for groups from Soladad, those outside of Soladad, and those outside of the county. So that is definitely something that we can look at.
And I'm just bringing that forth to, to, to the council and to, to you, as well as Megan, as well as our attorney, is that, you know, in, in programs that are totally different from what I'm talking about, you know, they do have that, because it kind of helps to kind of get our organizations or our groups here in Soladad to kind of have, you know, a tiny bit of an advantage there, you know, maybe it's not the sixteen points, maybe it's, you know, or being local, they get, there's an additional five points or something. But, you know, just trying to figure that out, how we can be helping our organizations and our committees here and our neighborhood groups to kind of, you know, maybe get a little bit of a bonus. I have a little bit better shot than, say, somebody who comes from the peninsula, nothing against the peninsula, and nothing against those organizations. We want as much organizations to come here and work with our community and better our community, but, you know, maybe, maybe that would help a little bit.
No, understood, yeah, we definitely want to take that equitable approach and, you know, understanding that a lot of organizations here in Soladad maybe don't have the funds.
Exactly, and don't have the funding status.
Yeah, so that is definitely something that we will, we will definitely give more points to local organizations.
Yeah, so through the, through the chair, I think it would be very easy for us to add, and we can split the percentage evenly. That's not a problem, but we can.
Percentage evenly, that's not a problem, but we can add that and weight it as each of those categories.
That'd be awesome, because I think it just, just to, you know, I can't, we'd like to see our, our, you know, we've got all these different committees that are here, but they're not necessarily five oh one C threes. Um, but they're always doing things in our community, so it'd be nice to see if we can, you know, get some of these mini grants over to them as well.
Yeah. And one, um, one, sorry, uh, one clarification to, on the smaller groups that don't have the five oh one C three. We would um direct purchase, um, instead of handing a check, and that would en- ensure some. Um, protection and transparency on both sides.
Uh, unless they use a fiscal sponsor, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Hi, um, well, thank you, Jesus, for coming back. Um, you know, the first. Uh, the first round, when we uh brought this up to council, it was very vague, and it could have been because we didn't supply sufficient. Um, a direction or instruction, but yeah, this was very comprehensive. I I really liked it. Thank you and Megan, who you said worked with you on this. Um, honestly, my questions, I, um, council member. Um, Chavis said my exact questions that I have, so. I have, uh, nothing else, which is wanted to, you know, thank you both, and yeah, that. Definitely the rating system that you have here, I really, I really like it. Um, but again, that was my only question as well. Is this, is there a percentage? Um, and also the order that it's on here, is that on order of, um, of importance or, no, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Again, thank you again for the presentation and and it is a concise uh. Uh, package that's coming for us. It's a, it's easy to look and identify, uh. You know, uh, the criteria for receiving our mini grants, and it's just not anybody. Um, and so therefore they have to meet these, uh, the criteria, um, like the two, I'd like to see us put that. Uh, in there as well, the bullet point saying, are you a member of, you know, of the community? Are you an organization that? Uh, uh, is established as solid ed or 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 is from solid ed? Um, the thing for me is, uh, the rating system itself is how. The weighted uh points to each bullet. Do we have, you know, if you meet all the criteria, is it three points or it's a maximum five? Uh, if you could spell that out, um, for me, and then the second one would be, um, I understood that if it's below, if it's a nonprofit or it's one that. Uh, doesn't have a nonprofit five oh one three C, that will be a direct purchase. However, those that we give money to. How are we gonna follow through? I could see us with a purchase, direct purchase, we know, this is what they're spending their money on. However, with the one we give the money to with the five oh one three C. Who's following up? Who's managing that program to ensure those receipts match what was given for the purpose that it was given? That's still to be developed.
No, no, I think, uh, through the chair, it will be, um. Jesus will be responsible for the program side. Mike Howard in finance will be responsible to make sure that the funding. Is um being used and that they have receipts and there's a.
Okay, so, all right. And then I also like that they're gonna come back with the presentation, how they're gonna use it for us for the council. So those are the questions I have. Any other question?
Yeah.
So therefore, uh, do we have a a motion? And would that motion like to include a caveat or a bullet point there for a point for solid ed uh. Uh, programs or uh, how do we want to word that?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and uh move forward, uh, the proposed criteria criteria for the city mini grant program. Including the caveat of, uh, really looking at local and local being solided, uh, and then determining that process through, uh, whatever else. Um, as we, as we were speaking.
Okay, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second?
And second?
We have motion first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion here, thanks so much.
Through the chair, can I, of course, if you circle back to item B one for just one second?
Sure.
Um, one of the agreements that uh we referenced was the uh City of Solid Ed Recreation Fund Special Purpose Fund. And that has an exhibit that requires the uh council to choose the investment option. And the last time, Drew, we chose uh the E S G portfolio, which is the environmental, social, and governance, basically. I just wanted to make sure that that was uh the option that the council wanted to pick when uh we need to build that one.
Okay.
Yep, we were good, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes uh all this, uh, the business of the day. We'll move into reports, uh, we'll move into council member reports. Uh, council member, uh, Chavis. Uh, none, uh, at this point, we'll have a town meeting next week, and we won't have a uh. About family value program for a meeting until after. Council member Correlo?
I think I just had a couple. I, um, I attended the nine eleven um ceremony that was held here at at city council, just wanted to. Um, to thank staff for putting that um together. And then. On nine fifteen, I attended the Women's Empowerment Resource Fair over at the um Solid Ed High School. Um, I was honored to be part of the panel along with um Mayor Velazquez. Um, and it was just that, uh, empowering women, there was a lot of resources, there was, um. Feminine hygiene products, diapers, um, books. Trying to think what else. Uh, there was uh clothes, interview clothes, and so it was just amazing. There was also uh workshops, including um self-defense. Um, and then also, um, with the Historical Society, I believe that they are having a, um. They're talking about doing a Veterans Day event over at the Solid Ed Historical Society. Um, and then also there is the, um. I think it's on October fourteenth, there's a, it's called Keep a Cup. And it's a tea and silent auction to benefit South, which is South County Animal Rescue. Our local animal rescue and also the Historical Society, so hopefully we all make it up there.
All right, thank you. Uh, I have no items to report. Uh, council member praises, anyone?
Oh.
Correlo?
Thank you. Um, yes, I wanted to uh thank. Uh, the women on the witness and also the Rotary District Club, as well as the Solid Ed Rotary, for putting together the second. Uh, Women's Empowerment Resource Fair, so that was a big. Um, a big event for again, maybe some women, so definitely wanted to praise them. And then. I had something else on here, and I'm, I'm losing it. I do not remember what my other, yes, I do recall, I'm sorry about that. Um, I just, you know, we we did bring up the mini grants today, and so if if we have any of those who submitted, um. Mini grants, uh, applications the last time around, I just wanted to thank you for your patience, how you that please bear with us. Um, you know, we, these are public funds, and and there's so many good. Um, good organizations out there that are helping different vectors and and different demographics and different people in our community, so it's. It is important to us to make sure we get it right, so just want to say thank you for that, and, uh, you know, hopefully we see your applications coming through again.
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, you know, I I think that, uh, uh, council member Quan, I've already mentioned him, but the Solid Ed Rotary. Uh, for stepping up, you know, they're not a huge, huge group, they're, you know, they're they're, there's like twenty-something members, I think, all together. Uh, but just stepping up, uh, not just only for the events that they. Participated in and 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 created or helped to to do here, but also for barbecuing for various events here in the community, they've been. Kind of stepping up and doing some of that work as well. I I know that they did it for the teachers. Uh, at the beginning of the school year for for the staff, and then, uh, they did it also, I believe, for, uh, the Women's Empowerment event also, so just the praising them.
Right, thank you. Yeah, for my praise, I'd like to praise the police department and Chief Watson for the the nine eleven, um. Uh, event, even though I wasn't able to attend, um, again, you know, it's one of those things that you should never forget. Uh, so thank you for being there and handling it professionally and 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 done well. Uh, and secondly, the second uh praise, I I like to, the Women's Empowerment, recognizing the the. The role models that we have and the women that were on there, council, uh, member Correlo. Uh, Mayor Velazquez, uh, Hartnell Trustee, Erica Chavis. Um, you know, um, each one of you are a model for you, each one of you. Um, these young ladies and and young adults, and not just ladies, and uh look up. To you because of where you are and where you sit and what you say. Uh, so it's extremely, uh, extremely, um. Uh, important that that you are aware of that, and I think because of that, that's why you're recognized as such as a role model for. Our young women and also the community. So, uh, again, my praise to you guys, or you ladies, for for uh participating and being selected for that. Because I think, uh, I think, uh, you present, uh, a good role model for for our young adults. All right, moving on to future agenda items. Anyone? I got like about five, if you don't have any?
Hi, through the chair, I I have one. It's a recurring one, um, just the uh planning commission appointment process. I think I've brought it up a couple of times, and. With the the district dean, um, you know, starting or or being in progress, I think it is important to make sure that. We bring that to to council.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, same thing, planning commission one, uh, that, yeah, that we had, I thought we had made a decision on that. However, now I've been made aware that that's not the case, that it hasn't moved forward yet, that each council member was gonna have a. The ability to appoint, so there's some, a little bit of changes going on, so understandably so, so if we could do that, that that'd be helpful. Uh, one of the other things, um, if we get a report just on the road maintenance, um, again, I was sharing that I was on. Part of South, uh, Eighth Street over there, on the other part of town, and Sixth Street, Seventh Street, and driving down Palm, I couldn't believe the condition of of the roads. I mean, I was, I'm kind of embarrassed by it, actually, because I sit on the council, and, um, we got good roads going in different places, repaved. Seen a couple of these roads, repaved a couple times, and and we don't get down to the Eighth Street or Palm Street and those other streets, so I I know it's probably, uh. Has to do with cost and more labor intensive, but, uh, we need to start planning, and if we haven't, and I'm sure. Um, hoping Steph has a plan for that, so if we could get a a report on that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, we we tentatively have that scheduled for the eighteenth. Um, I know that the council also requested a a presentation on safety. So we were, uh, so we were thinking about having both of those on the eighteen. And then, um, and the planning commission, Mike and I can probably, um, talk offline and give a date.
Okay.
When that would come.
Great. Any other items? Being that there is no other business, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. In at eight fifteen.